All right, thanks guys for coming for our workshop. Please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. How are you?
Good.
Okay. First we have a special board meeting. Thanks for coming to our board meeting. So our action item today will be the approval of the superintendent's contract for the 23-24 year. What would the wishes of the board be?
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the superintendent contract for the 23-24 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Katka.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoffman. We have a motion and a second to approve the superintendent's contract for 23-24 school year. Any discussion? Everybody had a chance to read it?
The only discussion piece I have, ma'am, is Mr. Wyld. Welcome.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Glad to make your acquaintance this evening, sir.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Aye's have it. Motion passes. It's quick and painless now.
Yes, ma'am.
Take. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Madam Chair, I would move to adjourn the special meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoffman.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Katka. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of adjourned in the meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Aye's have it, meeting adjourned. All right, we do have, the agenda says that we won't start the work session until 6:15, but we're, I'll hear anybody care if we start now unless...
Sounds like it would.
Well, I'm gonna grab my cap and coffee.
Okay, please. I say you wait till 6:15 because last week, I tried to get here as soon as I could, notified everyone that I was gonna be late and the part that I wanted to be here for was done by the time you got here. So I say you wait till 6:15 if that's what you posted. So we'll have a little break. You heard from Ken, did you make it?
I made it.
No?
Yeah.
You do? Here we are.
It's like you're taking off some. We can't believe it's so bad.
Oh, it's interesting. Because when that decade number changes, it's like, what the world?
I think that was a big number for me, but I felt surprised, you know, and then I said it goes 50. So no matter what, is it like, is it like over that?
No.
I feel pretty young still, but you think about that, we're like, wow.
Right now, it's downhill.
I could tell you.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, for sure.
I played basketball, like, the last part of the school year discussion. Came up to you and said, "Mr. Wyld, we'll play basketball?" "Sure, that's my rules, not yours." So here's the rules. I'll play defense if you shoot, and so I get the point. I'm not playing offense. That's how we're gonna play, so defense is pretty much in the paint. Then we have a little free throw shooting contest, which was a little easier on my knees.
For sure, for sure.
Yeah. I remember Dave used to play open gym with all the things. Yeah, that was super fun. I don't know if you guys saw that PDF I sent you.
Yes. First of all, I panicked because it was 55 pages and I went, huh.
I was just trying to give you the example. I was just giving the example, like, I found that survey, I thought, oh, that's kind of interesting.
Yeah, the survey, yeah. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Yes, I sent you what I could thank you for.
Yeah, that's a pretty good idea.
It works because then we don't have to run around. I just worked on that a little on my own. It's nothing that we have to keep. I just thought we could write on. Yeah, it's like, if you have any different ideas, that should change. Really, the only thing I changed was that I went to parents. Parents and guiding education. And then the vision statement reached the peak. I felt like the general consensus was that people like it, so, yeah. I mean, because on the website, it's still showing it. It gives us a starting point. Everybody, if y'all put your, let's say, trial. So since Diane's not here, I guess I'm gonna do the insert. Okay.
Because I thought that was for just...
Decorations?
Well, I thought it was for, like, our donkey, and I was like, no. Like, the hook. Otherwise, we would've been playing.
I questioned our committee about the alternative school week. I've always been favorable, and it's been crossed out because it's just a core you want to get at. And so I say we still get it, but that's everybody else's school year. You know, when we, like I said, when I taught, we toured schools all the time. I just forget that time was looking at it. And it was always an acceptable grade to Chugwater. Because you could go four days and those chapters were... It just worked out better.
Had some of that information coming out of this room every day. But they also managed that with, there's no such thing as a grade level. And it's like, okay, that seems like a, that seems like a really hard leap.
That's hard to picture, that's your...
Some outfit back in Kentucky. Yeah, so, okay, now, one or the other, maybe, but... So, yeah, it was only like, yeah, it was only like, and then sports and other activities involved in the afternoons. But it was just a kind of a weird dynamic of the way they did that. It was like, yeah, one or the other, it could be really cool, but both seems like a giant leap.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think the grade level thing was working better.
Really?
Yes, we just hit away with the grade level. So they just have a standard, and it's like... So entertaining kind of thing.
A little more difficult, but still. It's almost standard change, too, right? So sometimes like, you have those grade bands, like, six, seven, eight. Like, what are you introducing, what are you trying to simplify, what are you mastering?
That was neat, that's cool.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, there's some Google stuff going on.
Yeah. Well, 40 weeks really called a lot of publicity, because, but I think, I was out there, but it started out like, all Fridays were P E. How can you make every Friday a whole year relevant to every teacher? It's really hard, right? And then started picking a couple. And then that's, I mean, for some of those don't have anything. You need one or two times a semester. The other Fridays are pretty much on their own, they can work if they want to, the teachers do. There's not a requirement there. And sometimes if you can't do anything financially, sometimes you're having time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right? And most people would take time and money.
Amen.
So...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They only lived through COVID, like, they could do stuff at home. We even have workdays, so listen, if you get to work those, it's not before you're here. So you can just come if you need to, or stay home if you need to, or take care of your kids, whatever you do. Just get the work done.
That's a compromise.
I think the issue for Hannah really is Douglas' new job. So he doesn't have any, you know, built-in.
Nice. What's your contact, too?
Sure, well.
Have you seen those wax ones?
Which ones?
Wax, that, when it gets pretty tender, it melts.
Dates on the mediums.
Got like a swing that holds it.
It's not gonna work.
When it's lowered, it's about to expand.
There's no, we're not doing it.
It's like a self, like, no power option for greenhouses. But like, you put one, because you already have fans.
Jonathan's everything going in your way.
Yeah.
It's making them very busy.
Isn't it?
Run on the fly, like, okay. I look at it, it's like, oh.
Ten directions, yeah. Your hands in your mouth.
School's cool everywhere, but there's just little nuances, right? Like, how do you do this, and how do you do this, or why is that, or some of those kinds of things. But school's cool no matter what.
Okay. And how's everybody out here?
Great.
Is it feeling good?
How are you?
I'm good. My garden's growing.
Well, good. Had a little sunshine today.
Yeah.
About time.
Yeah, just been enjoying some sunshine and... I have some beets that came up finally. Yeah. But I already planted them like last week. Yeah. Had my granddaughter yesterday, and we played in big muddy puddles in my garden. Because one of my hills, squash thing come up, so I just let it play.
Well, good deal. Well, good deal.
It's just, it's just something I worked on, Amanda, and by no means is it like a final anything. It was just...
It's for item at the review district, homework.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I didn't do that.
What?
I didn't. All right. Okay, we have about 30 seconds. Can you tell me why we're using that camera?
Um, I'm trying to think, like, this could be live, but it's opposite. We said if we just want to post this so it's visible to everybody, we'll just use that camera. That's what they said today. But normally it'd be through that, and that goes directly to YouTube. And I think it's live, but there's a time lapse. And I'm not sure who watches that to be sure.
Warning about this.
That happens, so it's not like live, but we can post it on the YouTube channel anyway.
Okay, perfect, all right.
I didn't think they were live anyway. Maybe I was wrong.
They were recording available.
Yeah.
All right, 6:15, and we call the meeting to the workshop to quarter. Does everybody have time to review the agenda?
Yes.
Any, any changes or thoughts to that? Now, we'll get started with item A.
Okay, I think that's me.
That's... Mr. Wyld?
Yeah, so I kind of thought through a little bit in terms of maybe some goals between now and the start of school. Things to kind of focus on, so I kind of listed those one through five. And those are just, if you have other suggestions or revisions, please let me know, and we can sure revise those. So first one, listen, learn, observe, build relationships with staff, parents, school board members, and the communities of Platte County. I think that's really important. When you start new, you never know everything, right? You learn, every day's a learning experience. Like I said, school is school. I have great big experience with different small schools, large schools, rural schools, in-town schools. So I think I just listen, and that's how you, that's how you learn. And then make those connections, those positive connections and relationships. And I think that leads to trust in some of those things. So I think that's kind of the main goal. Build relationships, listen, learn as much as I can, as fast as I can, and then go from there. So that would be the first one. And then another big one, I think, is getting up to speed with the charter school in Chugwater. Facilitate some kind of lease agreement that protects the financial interests of the districts and also probably takes care of the needs of the students for Chugwater also. So I think that's probably a big goal that we need to get going on pretty quickly here. And I think with some committee assignments that'll help move that forward. And then there's some positions we have open. If we don't fill those positions, we don't have qualified candidates, we gotta kind of look through and try to make some decisions that best meet the needs of our students and staff. So if we do have positions that aren't filled, what do we do moving forward? Well, if we have transfers, you know, what do we do in that scenario? So I think staffing-wise, we probably need to look at across the board when our principals come back and look at registration numbers again and see where we're at. And make sure there might be some things we can do internally. We might have to be pretty creative in what we do in terms of staffing. I mean, it's just difficult to find qualified people, so, like, that's kind of on our radar for sure. Just positions and taking care of kids. So then budget was always a question, I think, when I interviewed about, you know, why do we feel like we're a poor district? And I think identifying those priorities from the past and where we spend in those dollars, that kind of helps say, well, purposely or not, here's where the money's going. So looking forward, is there some ways we can be efficient and effective and maybe do some different things to take care of students and staff financially in the district? Okay? With our guarantee situation, I mean, their guarantee is a certain amount of money, so it shouldn't be that far off. Maybe the district chose to do different things that's led them down a path where we're at. But in general, I would hope we can see that guarantee and utilize that a little better throughout the district. I think that's an ongoing thing moving into the spring. But I'm starting now looking into that a little bit with Jamie, so... Um, let's see, that's the budget part of it. And then the other one, just communication, I said at one update already, I think that starts with the board and the superintendent. Clear communication, what's happening, maybe there's a little wide behind it, just updates. And I think every week is where we'd start out with, things going on, and hopefully that person was beneficial to you guys as board members. I'll try to include as much as I can in those without overwhelming you. So maybe keep it to a page if I can, so you just know every week you're gonna get a page update from me and kind of highlight what's going on in the district.
Love it.
So those are five goals in the summer, I think, that are pretty important. Like I said, we can sure, if you have any suggestions, revise any of those things, add to it. And then I see probably some other ones kicking in place kind of when school starts or the start of school. I think there's some priorities you guys probably have for me to look at, too, outside of running the district.
Yeah.
So I've got a question. Or do you do that part? I've always got a question.
Okay.
Number two?
Okay.
We're entering a lease agreement, I don't know anything about that.
Well, I think that's, there's no, you buy statute, you can't rent, so it has to be a lease. So when you lease, there's lots of things in terms of equipment, there's lots of things about, like, technology. You know, what happens if it snows, who cleans the snow? So we have a sample from Dicky Shaner from the WDE that specifies a lot of it. But within that lease, there's some negotiation that need to happen between the charter school and the district.
Okay, so we're still, you're still talking about the contents then, not the building?
I think the building is part of it, what type of instructional square footage they want to utilize compared to the overall square footage. There's a lot of those things that...
Can I clarify?
Yeah.
You, are you, you're asking, are we for sure going for this?
Yeah.
That has not been made yet, but the negotiations, we're gonna get to that in committees. And we're gonna fast-track the committees, working with Prairie View, to figure out exactly where we are and what needs to be done. But yes, there is, the board has not agreed to anything yet.
Okay. Because that did not look like, that just did not look like...
But it is something that is on the radar with the state, with us. And I know your, your question is, are we doing this for sure?
The district part.
Right.
Don't get me wrong, but...
But we have to, we have to do something, and that's the committee working with John and Christian and Prairie View. When we get to the committee, which you are a part of, we'll...
Okay. I'll hold that though then.
There's a, there's a lot to it, just like all the reports the other day that you guys went through. I mean, it's like putting together a branding district, right? Think of all the things that go into that. Or if you lease a building, usually at least there's nothing there. But we have lots of stuff that might be beneficial to the charter school, so there's a negotiation on some of those things.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
I, I thought that was a going, and you were going with it, and I didn't know we were going.
I think we have to do a lease agreement, but I think there's a lot of work to be done to the final chapter of that one, so...
I think the key word there is to attempt to facilitate.
Good question.
Still a lot of information yet to come in from the state, right?
I think it's more between us. I mean, they gave us a sample lease that kind of highlights a couple things. I think it's more of a, starting with square footage and starting with, you know, it talks about custodians and snow removal and all kinds of things. So I kind of think it's got to be good neighbors, right?
Right.
So what do we might have in place that they might need that might be difficult for them to put in place? How can we work together to try to get this?
Yeah, I think, I think one of the major questions was major maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that goes in with the square footage they're gonna use out of the building. So if they use 50% of the building, they would get 50% of that. But in the lease, we can say, hey, if you make any changes, because it's our building, you need to run those through, kind of pass through, like, have a discussion, maybe give us a rationale why you need to redo the plumbing or something, I don't know.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so...
All right.
Yeah. So the call from Dicky Shaner the other day was pretty beneficial?
Pretty beneficial, good, good.
Yeah.
Very good. All right.
Any other suggestions or questions? Does that look a, kind of some focus areas moving forward? I know there were some other things through the, like, you know, the interview and some discussions with me afterwards. I think a lot of those were taken care of those, but I think these are kind of bigger ones. We can still get some of the little ones taken care of, so...
Right. I really liked the communication that you gave us, that...
Good.
I really liked that.
Good. All righty.
All right. Got through A. B, the superintendent evaluation, that is something that's been talked about several times, but nothing's happened. By policy, we were supposed to do it in June. We are on the 26th of June, we haven't quite got that done. And the thought was, and Amanda, if you want to, I know you've got, you've done more research on this, if you want to...
I read through your, your email and your...
I think... So there was information in the board training that we took that I did not send. I'm not sure how to get ahold of that, but that would maybe be a question for WSBA on how to forward that part as far as going, redoing the superintendent evaluation. And then there was another one that I did email everyone that was just from the class that we took in November in Casper. There was a lady from Cheyenne that did a presentation on modifying your superintendent evaluation. The one that we have, everybody seems to be unhappy with. I put in some two cents when we had to do it in December, and that went south. So it's open to ideas.
Okay. So were you liking this matrix then that they have, have been doing?
Having zero experience in it, I don't know because I've never done it. So I don't know. I guess we would have to lean on Dustin and Connie and Diane, maybe. I have no idea.
And so, yeah, over the last couple of years, we've noticed that while we're still in L and G District, that some of the evaluation questions, especially on the superintendent evaluation, are a little vague, a little vague, a little weak, doesn't really do the superintendent any good if it's just kind of a yes or a no question when he's looking for feedback as far as how does he improve. It, it, it becomes more like, did this happen or didn't it? And there's never really a whole lot beyond how effective something may have been. And so that's kind of where we've been looking over time, like I said, with, of course, the double-edged sword with L and G is, is it making sure L and G is kind of squared away as well? If that's kind of what we're evaluating on. So that's kind of where we've hit the, hit kind of that stymie, which, which one gets to go first here.
Do we have a copy of what's been used in the past? The part I didn't like, and I don't know where, I'll have to pull it up, is that the superintendent was just setting three goals, and then it never happened, and we were never looking at it or grading the superintendent. Yeah, following up, were those goals met? Or were they, so I thought that was a waste.
Yeah, right. Check this out, here's five goals.
Yeah, there we go, yeah. And, but, but that was in our old evaluation, and I didn't think it served a purpose because it never was about them. So I'm gonna find, like, how to get it, but I don't have it. Yeah, I, I was kind of trying to cruise around and find it, but I, I didn't. I didn't have any success, of course. Admittedly, I was doing that at 3:00 o'clock. Well, the attachments that Amanda sent, we've got here. Yeah, I do have hers, I just wondered, like, if we could do a side-by-side. It sounds to me like really what we need to do is do the follow-up with whatever the evaluation. Is that, is that what you're saying, Dustin? That you just need to follow up with whatever points came out in an evaluation? Tighten up whatever you want on the evaluation? Because we've never, the new board members have never done one, so... And we have a committee that's gonna start that, right?
And we're gonna look at that, I think that's probably what we need to do.
Yes, with Amanda starting it, yeah.
Are, no. Brian? Actually, if I may...
As part of it.
Dustin, you, you should...
I'll, I'll jump in.
No, wait, hang ten. I'm done yet, sorry, I was stuttering. Don't you have the evaluation?
I should.
The blank one? So can you send it?
It's almost blank, it's got a name on it.
We're pretty sure we all know the names. So John, have your, have, give us some ideas of how evaluations have gone in the past. You've been evaluated a couple times, I'm guessing. And I'm sure it depends on the district, they're all a little different.
Yeah, yeah, so this is my recent one. Yeah, so they just have the tool that they use, and there are different levels of like a rubric, like exceeding expectation, meets expectation, needs improvement, whatever those are. Then after each one, there was a little bit of a narrative, and the board actually had a retreat to kind of go through that. And then I think in policy, it said go to like an executive session review with me. We never did, I said do it in open public, I'm good with whatever you have to say. So we didn't go in executive session on that. They just went through the overall rating after they kind of went through that with me, kind of in a retreat.
Oh, okay.
And then you kind of had different sections, like constructionally, or financial, all the different areas, and then had an overall score, whatever. Yeah, I did all pretty similar. I mean, I think you want to give feedback so you can improve, right? That's what it's for.
It's not, yeah, you'll give your feedback.
I think we talked about the timing, it's kind of different to have two evaluations. I don't know if that's very typical, I know on your board policy, that does have to. I think usually it's in January, you do the evaluation, and then the next month, there's probably contract renewal or something like that. Then you move forward with your certified staff, and your principals, certified staff, classified staff. That's the sequence usually. So if you had to make a change, you could open up something maybe in January, February for the superintendent position.
So the timing in that would be better in January? And we had it in my October and June?
June.
Is that right?
By policy, it's supposed to be. So anything that comes out of here, we'll have to go to policy committee, I'm guessing. And then for board approval to change. And because policy actually says June and October.
Go ahead, Amanda.
Oh, you're right, I heard you. But, so the reason, Dustin, Connie, correct me if I'm wrong. The reason that it went to October was so that it was done before the, like, on election year.
Before elections, yeah.
So it was done in October so that you had the election in November.
The new board wouldn't have to do it.
Yeah, but then we got stuck in the middle. The evaluation part was done, but the contract part wasn't. And that's where the four of us got stuck in the midst of that part.
Right, okay. I just wanted to get the chronological order of things to kind of see what, but that does make sense to, to have it more in line with the January, February timeframe.
Does the leadership and governance, does it blend into the tool pretty well? Is there areas you can see a direct correlation between? Here's what some.
Mostly, for the most part, yes.
Okay, because I think that could put some time and effort into the LNG work. It makes sense, that's kind of woven into the evaluation of superintendent.
Absolutely.
That can be a giddy thing this year, that's the best, the best scenario.
We love it. We all want it.
Well, you know. I was going to say, I think we're all kind of giddy pigs.
All right, so what would you, I guess, since we're here, then should we, did you email that, Dustin, to us?
No, I'll, I'll find it for you.
Okay, and then we just start working on that? Is that the suggestion then?
Yeah, I would take a good look and review it and just.
Review it.
Look at each question and see.
Come back, discuss what, what we think, or based off of LNG.
And compare it to.
How many, yeah, and kind of, I guess the filter I've always looked at it with is how many different answers could I look at this question and answer it? You know, is it, is it fairly straightforward? Is it fairly tight? Is it, is it going to provide the information that's going to do both the board and the superintendent some good? Or is it kind of open to interpretation, and it could be all over the map, so to speak? So some of them are fairly tight. Some of them have just some language in them that make them fairly vague.
So having ever seen that, my version of the LNG, Dustin has experience with evaluations, and he has experience on the board. I got none of that. So the LNG and the evaluation thing to me are not that tight. Because we take LNG surveys and they're in the computer, and that's it.
Which is, which is item number C.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's why it's there, because a lot of us feel that, and so they're in the computer.
We just come away, yeah.
Yeah, well, and we, okay, so I think, pardon me, I'm just going. So who has an actual LNG book? Do we all have an LNG book? Because we were not given these, we were just, you guys don't have, you have?
I have one.
You don't have one?
I got one.
Okay, well, we'll get, we'll make, it, well, so basically, we're going to go back to superintendent evaluation during committee. But since we're talking about LNG, and they kind of, you know, are interwoven. I want everybody's opinion on, I don't think LNG is bad, I'm just going to say my opinion first. I don't think LNG is bad, I don't think we've been working it.
Correct.
And I think if we either need to decide that we are going to work it, which will help with the evaluation, which will help with the board evaluation, will, will help with a lot of things. Or we need to forget about all of the surveys and all of that crap. So that's what I want you guys to discuss.
We have been doing the surveys.
We've been doing the surveys, but we haven't.
And doing, you know, adding our comments, but we never, we never came back to discuss what that was.
Again, no follow up.
Right. Right.
So the way I kind of see it happening, and you, I know Dustin, you've had more experience, Connie, you've had a little bit of experience with it. The way I see it is if we do this and we do those surveys in the workshop, we can review those. We can just take every workshop agenda item, there'll be, or every workshop agenda, there'll be a, a line item that says LNG review. That we go back and we read the comments.
Every month.
And we, and we decide.
Or look at the comments that were on the survey.
Yeah, right.
Discuss that and tighten up whatever we feel like.
Right.
But, but LNG is also on our website, Connie, under the board.
Yeah, I do.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm hearing that people are liking LNG?
Yes, I do.
Do we need a refresh report on LNG?
Sure. Absolutely.
I, I know there were, there are several members in the community that former chair, or board members. Chuck Rivard, Beth Hindon, you said Kelly Tyson.
We're here with him.
And, and Chuck has offered to come in and explain why they did it, how it's supposed to work and everything.
What was the thinking, you know?
Yeah. So we can certainly get him lined up, or somebody lined up for a workshop, if you guys think we need it.
I don't have any problem with the concepts reading through it. I, I just do feel like it's just one of those pieces that if we're going to do the survey, we should discuss whatever we've, you know. Any weaknesses that we may have in the area of following it. I do believe we need to discuss how we can do better at implementing and following through with our board part, you know, of it. And, and as well, I mean, in, in every section, there is a superintendent part too.
Yeah, I'm just, like, I'm reading June's right now and thinking, okay, what do we do with it?
And that one was the safety thing of school, school student services. Yeah. Which does address quite a bit to ensure that a safer, appropriate educational environment is provided to all students. So, you know, there were, there were things in that I felt like, just discussing it tells me that on the board, one, one, two, one through four, tells me that there are, there are areas of input that should be coming from the board. Right?
Also, in our lengthy time of doing this, we have been supposed to be doing those, the board and the superintendent LNG surveys, on the first Tuesday of the month. Not everyone does them, but Corey usually sent out a reminder to do that. And so if we want to revamp how that process is done, whether that goes to somebody for a reminder, or you're that somebody, or you're that somebody, whoever. But the person that did it before is gone, is my point.
If we have it on a line item agenda, we're going to discuss it at a work session. It'll have to be done by that time.
And I don't, I can put it in the calendar to send out an email.
Yeah, because the first Tuesday of the month is going to, so like, so we could review what the previous month's, you know, survey was, right? Is that, does that make sense to review the previous month?
That was my thought when I come in, yeah. Well, no, if we do it the first Tuesday, we'd actually be able to do it that.
To do it, yeah, the current month.
True.
Yeah.
That would be fine.
Okay, somebody's going to have to show me how to set a calendar. Okay. And then we review in the first workshop of the month.
So as for my calendar, it stays the same. We're still going to do them on the first Tuesday of the month, right?
Yes.
And is the survey link always different, depending on your topic?
Can you pull it up and show us?
Yeah, I've got.
It's a little, it's a little tricky.
Connie, do you have it pulled up?
Yep. Yep. Difficult, look for the easiest, I don't know if you have it, so. Just went to leadership governance.
You can go by policy, or you can go by month due. So each month, there's a different one.
Okay.
So like for July, it'll be one on budget, how the superintendent, you know, what the responsibilities of the superintendent on the budget are. And then there will be a separate survey for the board on what the board responsibilities of the budget are. But each month, and some months, there's two, like September, there's two, April, there's two.
There's just a Google form?
Yep, correct.
Oh, you're going to send two, well, it just goes to the, um, plan one, which, which one I.
Our resources.
Work of the board, leadership governance, that's all you talk about.
So this program sends out the emails or the surveys with all the questions?
If you click on it.
It's more like a, yeah, it's just more like a link into it.
Link into it, okay.
Yeah, it's sinched. I get a reminder up there that I have to go to my agenda.
Okay, so we're going to be faithful in doing LNG.
And then we're going to review them at workshop.
And review them at workshop.
It's kind of like going over policy. Basically, it is.
The checker does, but the checker checks. And if we don't check, we don't get anything.
Exactly.
All right. Do you guys want a review from Chuck or anybody else on LNG, or do we want to just figure it out ourselves?
Well, I think, I think we can, I, I don't know, I, I think it's pretty clear cut. And then, you know, if, if we individually decide, hey, wait a minute, I do have more questions, I guess we could go into further. But I think just doing the exercise of, after having done the survey and identifying anything that we think, either where we can, or the super is, or we perceive the super is, or it hasn't been, you know, communicated. Then we can just talk about it at the workshop. I mean, I think just going into it open and figuring it out and, and making a practice of working through the LNG is going to go a long ways for everybody's understanding of what particularly our, our responsibility is.
Anything else on LNG?
Oh, I got you.
Takes us to board committee assignments and reviews. I just, I, I don't know, I just have felt discombobulated the last month or two, so I wanted to make sure we all remembered what committees we were on and what they were supposed to do, and see if there was anything that was changing with the reorganization. And I don't think so.
Though, if you're looking at the chart, it's not accurate.
I tried to find it again, I had it once.
I think it's in the packet that Mr. Redd. I think it's on page.
But if he printed that off, off of the, what do you mean, on the website, or?
Yeah, but I couldn't. I had it and could not, um, get it to minimize where, when, you couldn't see the dates of the meetings.
Like this person didn't work there anymore?
Change.
Okay. Yeah, and right now, I'm just looking at the board members, so.
Yeah, and.
Yeah, it only shows the left part.
Like this one, there's a whole chart because they rotate.
Yeah, rotations.
Is that the CIA?
CIA.
All the CIA.
On here, that's why I'm trying to find the old ones. Yeah. So I'd have to go back to shared.
Also, Sean is not on, listed on the activities committee. And when I review this, we have a staff member that has not been invited to our meetings. It's listed on here. I don't know if that person wants to be continued to.
Oh, okay.
Continue to be on that committee or not, so it might be worth looking through your staff members that should be involved as well.
Yeah, look at it and update any of the.
So Sean, I'm going to add your name, if it will let me.
Committee assignments, committee, we, committee members and rotations, that's, here we go.
Since you guys are here, is there any news on IBB meeting?
Wednesday?
Wednesday. And bringing Brooke, I'm going to pick her up and bring her.
You're going to bring Brooke?
I'm bringing Brooke.
Sweet, how could I have Jennifer when we're here?
She just got back, well, I got Brooke today, so.
Okay, all right, good deal, good deal, that'll be good.
She just got back from Colorado. Her dad rode in the Grand Central this week.
Fabulous.
He was so excited, he, it's real hard to get on a horse, but he, once he was on, he could be letting ride in the Grand Central. So that was the first, first in what, six months now?
Cool.
Hopefully our subjects are.
And just a question for me, Amanda, since you're on the tech committee, have you guys met?
No, because Ryan and his staff had a lot going on. And told, and let me know, and now he's got some more going on, and so I'm just being patient.
Yeah, that's, so my, my question, maybe John, you can, we talked a little bit about it. Would, like, updating our website and stuff, would that be all under here, or is that under somebody specific?
Um, are you talking like the committee would have to do with how that looks like? Because I talked to Ryan a little bit about the building secretaries are responsible and shake the balance to the content of their building. And then I guess myself and Heather have access to the main website to add, to track wherever we want to. But there could be some other ways to make it more inviting, so I don't know if that's really a committee.
Okay. All right.
People have responsibilities, we've just got to get it.
Mostly, you know, I just think that there's some areas that need to be updated, because, you know, like, I can't remember where is it going to, like, the S or report card? It's still the old board members, and, you know, there's several instances of that issue just going through. Of things that just need to be updated.
So that could be something that a board member to talk to Heather, and you, Heather, and or you? Okay, that's perfect. Okay. All right. Okay, are we really happy with our committees?
Well, you know, and like Dustin, we were on CIA, both you and I, it was someone else.
Yeah, they're just rotational.
They're rotational.
And I guess the way we've always worked those in the past is that's just kind of a, if we're available to come in on that Friday afternoon when it's at the district level in those CIA's, to just kind of rotate your way through those and see everything kind of at that.
I wanted it, I won at least one rotation in each of those, but I don't have the rotations to put my name in there, so.
Well, I wasn't always sure too, like, if they were meeting.
It's more like wide open, actually. Which you learn a ton of those, that's amazing.
Well, we can tighten that up, maybe, just to make sure that people are reading all your files.
Somebody, at least a, you know, a couple ones, actually.
So our calendar, our calendar was only made till December twenty-two.
So Dustin, wasn't the policy committee rotational also? It's just the one. Do you want more, you just want two on there?
Yeah, I think two on policy committee is good.
Then where IBB?
I guess, I guess, I could defer to you on that, on policy committee as well.
I would have smacked you if I didn't agree with that.
And then finance.
Well, and then at any time too, like with policy, if, if, you know, as we're perusing policy, like we sometimes watch C-SPAN. You know, if we find something that we think might not be, you know, that might need attention, we can bring it to the people who are on the policy committee's attention? Is that right, or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So I kinda feel like the committees go hand in hand with the L N G. The people that are on that committee know those things, but then the things don't get told to the other people. So hopefully, we'll fix that, tighten it up.
Every month, we're discussing it, cause it's on a line item, and get discussed. So there aren't any, under C I A, there aren't any names? So we'll just get sure we're on rotation.
Okay. But there, there were. Connie, you are under instruction for rotation one.
Okay.
Curriculum for rotation two, and assessment for rotation three. But, that calendar.
I, I C A.
But that calendar was January twenty-two to December twenty-two, that's what I'm saying, then.
That needs to be updated. Good thing for you to do.
I believe I saw your name on calendar committee, Phil.
I'm not on technology either.
Pretty sure, calendar committee, Connie and Amanda. Weird.
I'm, I'm there, but.
Well, we can work that out.
We can work that out.
We need somebody that can adjust that, cause I can't get into it.
Do you have to ask for editing permission?
Yeah.
Pretty sure you do. Sometimes I've asked, and it's like, um.
Okay.
Permission denied.
Committees are done.
Okay, so while we're still on committee, do, um, a couple of committees, obviously, that I wanna talk about. First, since we left it from item B, do we want to do a superintendent evaluation committee, or are we, and get?
I wrote committee down on it, yeah.
All right, any volunteers to serve on the superintendent evaluation, Amanda?
Dustin, you look at it.
You don't have to, Amanda, I just, no, I don't, I didn't wanna force you, but I know you've, you've invested a lot of time already in, in that, and we appreciate it. We appreciate you pushing us to keep it a friend.
Well, when you, Diane and Chase are here.
I was gonna say Diane and Chase may, one or two.
Okay.
We can volunteer them, and then they can. I'll probably request one right now.
Okay.
Now, that's another thing, do you want just board members on there?
Um, I think at this point, I do, just to, to tighten up our evaluation process.
First, yes, okay, that's all I'm gonna do.
And then, if, if that's okay, yeah.
Yeah, to, to do that evaluation.
And if the committee decides that they want to involve everybody else in the process.
That would be, that would be part of the communication.
Yeah, that's, that's perfectly fine, too. Okay, and then on a, um, so, another temporary committee, I guess. We do need, and we've talked about it for a while, several weeks, the board committee to negotiate with prayer review. And I would like to have Sean and Amanda and myself on there, unless, but please discuss, and if anybody else wants to volunteer, that'll be good, too. We can discuss, we only want three on there, or else we have a quorum and we have a problem. But, guys, tell me your thoughts.
Do those three, and then, and as I'll be an alternate, because there can't be a fourth, you can only have the three, but if there's one of you that cannot, that need us, somebody to stand in, I would like to be an alternate.
That's a good idea.
I think it's always a good plan to have an alternate, just because, especially in the winter when there's bad weather.
Well, you, this one for me, for I B B, it works good, yeah.
So we will work in conjunction with John in negotiations with prayer review, and bring information back to the board, and hopefully move forward. Okay. Okay, any other committees we need to think about?
Well, I just didn't know what you were doing here with, oh, is that just a separate line item? Okay, I think it is, never mind, I answered my own question, thank you.
Shane and I were just discussing the, um, finance committee.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Really set up a couple superintendents ago when we were in a really bigger financial cr- for just kind of like, I don't know, idea committee, and that was it, and was, it really doesn't have any, like, it has no, like, decision-making power or anything, and, but there was one meeting that we, we just didn't even know if it was really necessary as a committee, if it didn't have any power, other than to sit around and talk about. You know, I mean, there wasn't even any ideas really that were coming out there or not, I don't know. We were just talking about, like, do we have to leave that, I don't know.
Yeah, it didn't, uh, we did, we weren't even able to make recommendations towards any of the financial items that were probably the most pertinent and salient in the district every, the last couple of years, so, maybe it's just the structure of the committee in and of itself, otherwise, then, I'm sure everybody has other, more time, and could be.
Well, and yet, that, that was one of the things that I think has been continually brought up, is that when those ideas were fielded, then what you're seeing is there was never anything that happened with that? Is that what you're seeing?
No, not necessarily, but I guess, in, in my mind, like, when you're on a committee, you're doing some, you're doing a lot of committee work, we had to, we had Chuck Water, we had every level of the school represented. And we, in the sense, we just kinda turned into like, uh, we were getting information, and then we were, our, I guess, we were going to disperse it to our areas, versus, we're stakeholders in a specific area with ideas, and we're gonna bring those to the table to help solve problems, or, you know, current or future. And then as a committee, we were going to talk about all of those, all of our stakeholder ideas, come up with a recommendation for what would be best out of our, for our committee, given the people that are on it, and then be able to pres- have the superintendent present that, or that be presented to the board, or have another way to, um, to share all the stakeholders' ideas. And so, it was more of just an information dispersal unit, rather than, like, to me, good committee work, but, that, that's, that was my take.
And I have to tell you that our, I was so excited to be on the finance committee, I thought, oh, that would be a great committee. I was never more disappointed in my entire life.
She was really excited, like.
Like, I want that committee, cause I thought we could solve problems. I really thought that's what it was about. I was so, it was like, I don't get it, I don't get it.
So are you saying that you think that if it's not more interactive and producing some kind of thought process towards achieving goals, then you think that the finance committee doesn't need to exist, or? I just wanna read it.
I guess, yes, that's probably a fair assessment, and I think, I think, um, Mr. Whitehead will, his, your input, I think is probably, probably, um, needed on the committee process and how, how it works, if you.
I just don't know what you're doing, I see all the, a little bit, see what, what's the timing of it all, and are you looking at priorities of the budget? Are you looking at, hey, let's just see where the money's going, and is that where our priorities are at? We all know there's some basic budget, you know, personnel, certain percentage of budget, which is a lot of it, and some of those kinda things, it'd be interesting. I'm just not sure if the board even knows where all that sets, in terms of where it's going, and what are we spending our money on? Then you can say, I have priorities, and maybe get input, so I think maybe, kinda leading towards spring, we might have some pretty good information to share with stakeholders or our committee, so.
I would like to say maybe we put a pause on that right now, until we tighten it up and figure out where we're at, and what we need to do, and make it productive, cause I agree with you, the worst thing in the world is have a meeting, just have a meeting and never get anything out of it. So, I, let's just pause finance committee for now, until we either can make it work, or figure out if it's being handled in another place.
And, and I would speak to that, I felt like a lot of times, some of the discussions there were being, somebody that was also finance and I B B, that a lot of those discussions became goal discussions, and I would say ninety percent of the people on finance were also on I B B. It was just like, we just discussed this, you know, last week in this other meeting, where we couldn't do anything, you know, and so, and then it came back the other, and, and, um, so that, that is also something to keep in mind, that there is also a committee there that does discuss and look at that financial impact on staff and students through I B B.
Okay, so, just to go through the list, policy committee is obviously important, I B B meets consistently, finances on hold, calendar committee will have to meet.
I'm sure, cause we'll need a new calendar.
Do, do they meet? I'm on that committee, and I'm not.
Yeah, they do.
We didn't this year, because we already approved the calendar, we did two at a time.
Cause we just got.
Oh, we'll have to.
Oh, okay, that's why.
Okay. Perfect. Alternative week, school week committee is crossed out, activities committee meets during the school year, we try, we strive for once a month. Technology committee, we went over, has not met yet, C I A.
Those are like, once a month?
Correct, yeah.
In the current format, yeah.
And so, do you wanna revamp this whole thing, is my question, and add the committees that you're creating, or? No, because these committees that we're creating are temporary for the board, for a specific person, purpose. Are you talking about the superintendent and the check water? I'm just asking, cause there's one crossed out on here, so. The alternative school week, and I think that, does it necessarily take nothing?
Two, two Connie's chagrin has gone by the wayside.
I, yeah, I, I think it should have gotten scratched on before.
About three years ago, when we proposed the, uh, four-day school week, and then we went through, um, most of the year, that met, and then we made, we made a proposal in, Bryce, Bryce didn't even know, he was active in it, but, um, maybe in April, well, maybe it was earlier than that, and then, um, and then after, after that last board meeting, that one, that table, that committee did.
Did they, and I'm just trying to remember this, because I can remember watching some of the meetings, like during the COVID thing and everything. Was there, was there a survey of some sort that went out to community, do you guys remember that?
I think there were, yeah, there was.
And there just wasn't, there just wasn't enough interest from, from people, is, do you recall?
I remember there was enough opposition from a couple of people, that it, that it didn't, didn't advance, and.
Oh, okay.
And that, that might not, I may not have said that quite right, but.
I'm not bringing some, um, it's on the list, I'm just. So is this something that is paused too, that should be looked at again, or should we, should it go away? Connie, you were on.
I've always been in favor of it, so I've always been, eh, it's been gone through, even when I was teaching, it was gone through, we looked at it, but that's just because.
And there's a number of alternative schedules, I know last time, we did, we did heavily on the four-day school week, you know, you look at Congress County, does, they do an alternative schedule, or I think they do like a hundred and sixty-seven days, where they have their high-impact Fridays off, like, say, um, regional volleyball, state volleyball, and they'll cover like the first two weeks of, uh, football playoffs, and then they do, um, you know, they do regional,
Yeah, there's all kinds.
They do regional basketball, state basketball, state track, so they take out, take out those days that's gonna affect, um, a high number of their, their students, and then also staff members that have kids participating, so, to me, I think those things have value.
So it, it does not need to be taken away?
Yeah, I, I don't know that I'm the one to decide whether or not.
I think you should leave the committee, right? That's a vested interest.
I would like to know that, just leave the chairman that's all I'm wearing. I'd be, I'd be happy to be a, a member of it as well, as I was in the past, but, um, so I think there's, there are,
knowledge of what's going on, that's what we need.
There are things in there that I, that I think are, um, you know, times change, and, and, and people adjust, especially as our kids go through, and so in the opinion you have, maybe three years ago, when all your kids were in elementary school, it's gonna be different when they're in secondary school, and you see how a five-day school week can affect, you know, your kid that is never there on a Friday for classes. But, that's just.
So when do the committees usually start, cause summer's a little difficult, people are transitioning, and people are busy, so do you start when school starts, pretty much? Is that the start date? That's one of the traditions. Yeah.
We're just our I B B, we're just hanging out.
Teachers never ask for work, you know, work all summer.
Never get enough of I B B, right?
Never.
Okay.
Well, so I guess in answer to that question, that was.
Keep it open.
Let's keep it open.
We're pausing, as it's been paused, we're keeping the alternative schedule paused.
All right.
Okay.
Anybody else went on there with me? Good.
I wouldn't mind that.
Good, good, good.
So, you know, we can discuss.
If we ever meet again.
Sounds like a song I know.
Okay, um, next, school board communications to stakeholders. Um, and this was put in there, this was, uh, we've talked about it a few times, um, W S B A has talked about it to us several times about tell your story. So, um, what we wanna do is figure out the best ways to tell our stories. I think recording the meetings has been a huge, um, positive, so. Thoughts, ideas, how do we get our word out to the people of what's going on in our district?
I had, you know, mentioned, um, to a couple of different people, but, you know, I think that there are some ways that we can support our staff, you know? My idea being like, if, if we say on the Facebook page, if we had a board corner, the boards corner, you know, where we could remind parents and, and students to remember to get, you know, say, just as an example, be sure it's Y top testing, be sure and get good rest, you know, make sure you're, you're having snacks and good nutrition during this time, just reminders, you know, just, and just also communicating maybe big things that we're doing, sort of what we do in the meetings with good things happening, you know, we could carry that into maybe the Facebook page, or in some other way, um, you know, just positive things that we wanna highlight, that are good things happening in our school, different things like that. You know, just bring in more of a positive light to things, and, you know, um, in a board meeting, sometimes the tapes are hard to hear. You can't always hear what, what the discussions are, et cetera, and, you know, just looking for ways to be able to communicate to the stakeholder, you know, and even students, you know, I'd like to incorporate, you know, something positive from the board for students as well, you know? So I don't know what that looks like exactly, but I suppose you would have to assign somebody that would be in charge of that, of the, you know, providing that to, um, Heather, perhaps. I, I'd just like to kick around the idea, I guess, and see what you guys think about that.
Social media is a good way to get.
Well, it's the way of our school.
The plat one, we have that pops up on Facebook all the time, but if we could have a, you know, a school board one that pops up.
So my question goes back to your comment on us having the letter, or the cards that we sent to the teachers, if it's coming out as, I'm not knocking it, let me say that.
I saw where you're going.
If it's coming from the board and not an individual. Take it away.
Information sharing is a different thing than a discussion or a decision. And so we would just have to be very cognizant of that. Like Sean said, like Sean said, hey, it's Y top testing, get good rest, get, yeah, that's not really a decision, it's not really a, much of a discussion, according to board business, it's just some information sharing.
Well, that's what I was thinking in terms of, maybe not necessarily giving a report of, you know, what, what we're working on.
But it's not an action item.
It's not an action item, it's just, it's just a way to communicate. Because one of the things that Brian Farmer has talked about a lot in the various meetings that we've had, the board needs to tell its story. If we're going to be relatable, we need to be relatable on the items and the issues that parents and students are facing. So it's more like that. I'm not, I'm not thinking in terms of like, well, here's our report to you, the stakeholder today, because we do record our meetings, you know, most of us, if people are emailing us, we know the whole protocol of that. Um, I'm, I'm looking at a positive way to interact with the communities, basically. But I think that Amanda's point is, well, it's a good reminder for us to make sure what we put out in any situation is only information and not something that we haven't made a decision on.
Decisions.
Yeah, right.
And I agree with what you're saying, and I agree with Lou, Lou's saying, I personally don't think there's any difference in saying, eat an apple before you take YTOP versus thank you to the teachers. I don't see the difference there. One was an action item, one's not, I guess I personally don't see the difference. Again, I'm not knocking, I'm, I'm on board with what you're saying. I'm just saying.
Now, the thing to, how come it had to be?
I personally don't understand the difference.
Because it had our signatures on it?
So I would not be the most person for that.
They couldn't just say the board, we had to, because we signed it and it probably.
When it says the board, that becomes a board action. That, 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 that one's kind of an interesting one, but, yeah, we got through it, it's all good.
So we won't sign anything that we put on social media?
Okay, I'm trying to define the, um, the actual policy, there's policy in here, under board governance and operations, for that once a year we are required to, um.
State of the district.
I got it right. I knew she had it.
What's policies? When is it state of the district?
So it's under general two point one, it's, um, item number four.
General?
General, mhm.
Are you in, but you're in LNG?
I'm in LNG.
Okay, well, I'm looking for the actual policy too.
Oh, okay.
So they should go hand in hand, and I know it's here, I just can't put my, so what are we looking for on it right now?
So maybe, can you search it in, like with key phrases, the board will annually involve the community, parents, guardians, students, staff in developing expectations for the district, that one, is that what you mean?
That's policy.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Um, so at, at minimum once a year, I don't know that, I mean, I don't think we've done that other than putting our meetings on the, and maybe that's enough to meet the policy, but, um, there are some, there, besides that, there's some options like, um, and I mentioned it before, at the radio station Kent will do a roundtable with us, um, on Thursday or whenever. He does it right now with Public Health, a, a twenty or eight oh five on Thursday mornings, once a month, um, for twenty minutes, so I don't think we'd need twenty minutes, but it's kind of just a Q and A and information sharing and things like that. Um, we could look into that once a year, once a quarter, once every semi-annually, however, that's just a thought. I do feel like maybe the new gal at the paper is going to be a little bit more involved in our meetings, so we'll see how that goes.
I believe that the minutes have gotten less and less as the years have gone on. Like it used to be the minutes that were reported out, not like details. Like, do you remember the day you could go to Safeway and you'd pick up the paper and put your grocery stack and it would say like, Don and Keith hired first grade, Diane Schrader resigned seventh grade, and get gamey details of what happened?
When Helen or.
Yeah.
Um, we sent those home in grocery bags.
We could buy them.
I think, yeah.
And they did find out, they did find with those, um, what I heard was that they were throwing the majority of them away, nobody wanted them anymore. Which is sad.
It just sit on social media, but it's just, it's very vague in comparison to what it was at that time, and I don't know if there's rules, but like it truly did sit, I mean.
I remember it's done worth reading, it's just blah, and now you're going to skip over it, it used to be detailed.
It was.
Okay, so we need to work on our minutes.
I mean, and I don't know if there's rules, like, can you say who was hired in that, at that point or not?
If you make official action, they're, they're, but.
Yeah, I mean, it used to, that's why, that's why I picked it up.
Well, and, you know, like other, I notice other districts list every payment that's made and, you know, all that.
So for communication, then we need detailed minutes.
Okay, so two things, BBD has public relations for the board, but there's no timeframe in it.
BBD?
And BDDG is on the minutes, and it says the.
BB? BB? What?
Bravo, Delta, Delta Golf.
BD. Two Ds, two Ds.
Thank you.
All right.
That's on the minutes. The minutes will include a record of the official actions taken and of all warrants issued at any meeting. The names of all members present and absent, the topics of business brought before.
I used to hate to read in front of the class.
You're so good at it. Brought before the board and the votes on every issue will be included. At a subsequent meeting, the written minutes will be presented for review, possible corrections and approval by the board. They will then become official records of the district. Notice of availability of minutes for public inspection will be given twice yearly in accordance with law. Legal references and readings is the rest.
So, yeah, I, I personally have always felt like the minutes needed to be a little bit more detailed, for sure.
We're going to work on that. And Bravo, Bravo Alpha, number four is public relations, the board is responsible for providing adequate and direct means of keeping the local community informed about the schools and for keeping itself and the school staff informed about the needs and wishes of the public. There's no timeframe or anything, so I don't know if that's what you were looking for. Tell me again, what, Bravo, Bravo?
Bravo.
Bravo, Bravo Alpha.
Board powers, responsibilities.
Okay, so it's just. Which also, like as we go through LNG, we're going to find those pieces.
Are we doing those policies, yep? Yeah, that's all, it speaks to all of them. We are acting as a court of appeals for staff members and students.
We have a judicial responsibility.
Do you got to speak up?
It gets better than that.
You would?
It gets better than that.
Okay, so we're going to work on the minutes and. And then we'll work also with Heather on.
Minutes, details.
Social media.
Social media, thank you. Okay, all right. Last item, review district vision, mission, belief statements. Sean did her homework, did anybody else?
I didn't really change that much, I mean, I, I added a few things and you guys can just look at it, but I mean, mostly what I had noticed missing in the previous statement was an inclusion of parents and guardians. Yeah, there was a statement about the broader community, but it wasn't specific to, to parents, guardians, you know. I, I feel that it's important, so I, I just took the mission statement, most everybody feels like the vision statement, reach the peak is, you know, it's, good, people worked on it. So I don't feel like the vision statement probably needs too much, but, um, on the webpage, it says, the mission statement of plat one is currently being reviewed as part of our continuous improvement process. The school board is leading the process and working on this task during work sessions in FY twenty twenty-two. So I feel like that that's still sitting there like that. So I, I would like for us to finish this piece, um, so that when a new person comes to plat one, to look at our schools, that this is pretty well defined. Now, I basically, on the beliefs, I just basically went through, and one of the things that I really did want to, um, identify was that we were actually wanting our students to have opportunity to, you know, foster a culture of respect, hard work, honesty, that kind of thing, you know? Going back to the expectation of, you know, respect, respect for others, respect for property, you know, those kinds of things. So you guys can go through that, but in the, in the mission statement, you can read what I wrote, but I just added, that we will foster an environment where parents and guardians will be encouraged to take an active role in guiding the education of all our students. And that was missing in the previous statement, and I, I, I do feel like if, if we want, if we want parents to be involved, we need to let them have a place at the table, I guess, you know? And hear their voice and be more intentional to do that. I think it goes without saying that parents and, I mean, that teachers and educators and administrators would say, well, yeah, we are interested in that. But I think that it comes down to intentionality, it's like making sure that that's known. We want to hear from parents, you know? Do they feel like their voice is heard in guiding that educational piece? And, you know, having, having that voice sometimes is going to go a long ways for relationship between parents and, and the board and staff and, you know, all that. I think it's already happening, don't get me wrong, I just feel it needs to be intentional, you know? So anyway, you guys can look at that, we can, you know, we can come back.
Well, I agree with that, what does it take for us to make any worrying changes?
It'll be an action item on next, on the next board meeting, right?
So we just have to make a motion on it and say, this is the way we want it to read?
Right, and, well, and you guys add your, your piece, like I said, I, it was given as homework, I decided to just kind of go with it. You know, there's our belief statements up there. I didn't change that much, you know, just a few little things. I should have highlighted exactly, you know, what I changed, but. Well, and they're on the website, so. Right, and it, it was, it was about involving, um, parents, you know, there was a statement about the broader community, which I think is good. And I think there are things that are going on in the district that are really good as far as, you know, like, I know with Perkins and different things, you know, I, I've sat in on some of those meetings on what are employers looking for when, when interviewing a student, you know? Because a lot of us do hire students during the summer and, um, you know, just kind of, there's ways and things that are going on, you know? Um, I just, I just feel like in terms of what we put out, number one, it needs to be finished on the website. We need to finish this piece because we do have strong beliefs and we do have core values that we want to make, be made known.
And does, and if you, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was finished, it just never got updated, is that correct?
That is correct.
Oh, okay.
That is correct.
All right, so either way, it needs to be updated on the webpage.
So Sean, did you look at this, this stakeholder survey on, did you look at that? Don't you reference some of your work from, or?
Um, I didn't reference it really so much from the, from the survey as much as just, um, hearing from stakeholders and personal experience, probably over, you know, I have a forty-year-old, a thirty-five-year-old and, you know.
I think this was kind of done in the process maybe to try to get feedback from the stakeholders and, you can find out a little more about that, I mean, I just saw that today, so.
And it's in our.
This packet that you gave us, yeah.
Hard about sometimes you still have the dates or you don't know, like when it was done, is before the work, after the work, so sometimes it's kind of hard to follow, but look, this was pretty recent to me.
Yeah, so belief statements, combined belief statement, and like I said, there wasn't that much that I really, really changed or anything. I just, you know, I just feel like that inclusion, um, also, you know, students as well. So if, if what you changed hasn't been, and it hasn't been updated on the website, then I guess I would need a copy of what you guys had changed.
Okay, I remember this survey. I asked Cory about it a while back and he said that the statement that is on there is still the, the statement. It's current, so I don't know why that is still on there, and then Lou asked him in a meeting one time, the wording was changed, but it's still there, but that's, that's totally still the mission.
We're going to take care of it in our next business meeting. Okay, so we'll just update it in the. So, um, and that survey, I remember reading this survey, I think this was probably maybe a year, year-ish ago or something, we, I don't remember, I don't know, but I remember reading it. So that might be helpful as you're looking for any change to the mission statement, but we'll update that next business meeting and get it on the website. All right. Any other action items that we need to talk about, or not action items, sorry, it's workshop.
Yeah, I got one.
Yes, ma'am.
So we went over LNG and the things, whatnot, are we still doing this? Yeah, I'm going to figure out what, exit service? Yeah, the exit ticket.
Are we using it? That's the stuff.
Right there, LNG.
I answer it, but.
I answer them.
Do you think we're, it's useful?
Not right now.
I don't.
Because we're not doing anything with. Because, yeah, it's just, to me, it's the same as LNG, I do it every month.
We've got LNG to look at, and I think our exit ticket is a waste of our looking at, in my opinion.
Total exercise.
You know, and then on that, in that same vein, um, I've received quite a bit of feedback from people about qualtrics. Do we want to look in, look at it in the future and say, you know, whether or not this is a positive and wonderful exercise or, or just quit?
The other thing on that same note, when I was visiting with John, is, didn't we buy that for two years?
No, I grabbed, paid for it for two years, or it was grab money.
But two. The timeframe is two years, though, when is that two years up?
We've had, this is year one, next year will be year two.
But, but when, when did it start in years?
Fall?
You know what I'm saying, like?
Yeah, we're on it on at the end of last summer, just before the, the beginning of the school year.
To finish in year one?
Yeah, we're finishing year one.
So we have a whole nother year of it, rather we, but we don't have to, even though it's paid for, I mean, that, that, I don't know, the feedback I've gotten is, there, I haven't gotten hardly, it's caused more. I think it had a purpose, I don't know, what do you guys think is?
Change smiling over there, right, it's tear shade. Change driven. Never get smoker blower.
There's a lot of opinions on it, I don't see that.
Oh, yeah, 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 and, and it's like, I think good information came out of it, I don't, um, in some ways, I think we really need to look at it and see, because I think a lot of negativity came out of it. But maybe that's sort of good for good.
And maybe it is, but, and I think it goes back to what Mr. Weigl's goal is, it's probably, probably more important than the survey. It's about relationships and, and many some things that have gone south, and I think. And I think, and I think if we take care of people, the surveys, to me, um, they're a waste of time.
Yeah.
And that's my own personal opinion. I'd rather go talk to Mrs. McKee and have her tell me something face to face that I need to hear, than give her an anonymous survey and then go read it somewhere else. I, that's how I feel about it.
And hear somebody out here doing that for us.
But we need to talk, we need to get back to talking to people and listening to people and then making changes.
Thank you.
That's my opinion.
I agree.
And I'd agree with that. So I don't know.
It's like we like to hear things like that.
If, I don't know the, um, specifics on the Qualtrics, if there's, I mean, I, I, I agree with what he said, but maybe there's a different place.
Or something.
That could be used, or what are other things that they offer, or if it's only surveys, I don't know.
Yeah, because it didn't really get used.
Because we've got, we've got another year that.
To solve.
Granting to pay for, so if there's a better.
It was more just an affirmation case at that point, but.
Well. So.
I don't know, um, of course, I didn't take the Qualtrics survey, because we came in on it, we kind of had the whole thing. But I have a question, uh, is there a section in there for students? And are we identifying what students need? I mean, I would rather use our, our surveys in a way that helps us to better our students' experience. Because it's too easy, and especially in our culture today, where it's so easy to get on behind your keyboard and type things without thinking it through, and it's a lot, it's, it's better if, if you won't say it to my face, then, you know, it's, it's too negative, it, everything becomes too negative.
It's easy to be negative on.
I think so.
Phenomenously.
I, I'm just, I'm trying to be as careful as I possibly can here. But, you know, I am in one hundred percent agreement with Shane. That we need to get back to face-to-face conversations, we may not always agree. But I, I sure hate to think that we're continuing something that has been so negative and hurtful and hard for our staff. Life is hard enough, you know, we want things to, as a board, our staff and, and our students are a part of this community of stakeholders. And I, I would like us moving away from things that is just too easy. And for one, you know, it's, it's like, A, is it factual, you know? Is it hurtful, you know, I mean, these are things that I don't think people, once they're aggravated and upset, it's too easy to let that emotion take over at the time. And then even after having thought about it, might even change their mind about, you know, um, some of those comments. But I think there is a place for it, but I, I would like to gear us more towards what's gonna help our students the best, what's gonna help our staff to be, you know, in a positive working environment and, you know, celebrated and encouraged.
Okay, so we'll, we'll see if there's any other options with Qualtrics, um, other than just sending out the survey, because I, we get our LNG surveys, and I know the teachers and I've been have all kinds of surveys too, so. So Amanda, the answer to your question on exit ticket, I think that I took was we're gonna pause those right now until we know what we're doing for sure.
Well, I've tried to hit them most every time, but.
But again, we don't do anything with them, so.
There's been times I, I, I have it, because there used to be a link at the bottom of our. Do you remember?
And now they're under resources.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know, but I'm like, okay, here it is, under my monthly task, exit ticket.
So that, that leads me to the next question. Um, John sent us our agenda tonight in a different format, all in a PDF, as opposed to the links to the Google Drive?
I liked it, because then I can just.
A little more concise, so I was just giving you examples, so it was a little lengthy, but in general, it's just built for like supportive document, documents that you would have prior.
He sent us the agenda that was fifty-five pages long, so.
I'm gonna see if they can read it off. What kind of hard workers they are.
Literally, fifty-five.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
I want, I, I, I like the agenda where I can click on it, it's interactive, so if I click on.
The hyperlink?
It brings it up, yeah. To bring up what we're talking about, that part, I like.
You know, the blue words. We like the blue words. But no, I like this, because now I can just scroll down, it's all right there.
Yeah, it's not the scanning type looking for it, I don't have to keep clicking back and forth.
It wouldn't eliminate your, your, you go to Google still in your drive, the board, you still have access to all that, but I think it just puts it in one place.
Yes.
Early on, where you have it days before, so you can actually look through the supporting documents, just for you guys, right?
So I, I really like it. So instead of having to hit the hyperlink, you just scroll down.
Yep, it'll all be.
Kind of an order of the agenda.
I understand that, I got that.
Yeah, so, and he, John is willing to go whatever we want to do, so if you guys want to try this for a while, if you have other, it sounds like.
I like it.
It's learning, it's good for us.
Do you want my practice?
It's all there.
I have a thirteen-year-old protect stuff, so whichever way you want to do it, sounds great. I do have another thing, but that's not that, so.
That's all I got?
We're done with that? Okay.
Yeah.
So the other thing in the fifty-five pages was a Platte County School District number one communication plan that I found on that reference sheet.
Yeah, that talked about what we could be doing. It hit some of the things that we talked about tonight, about the.
So I had not seen that till last week, so when I was visiting with him the other day, I mentioned it. That was just something, it's been on there the whole time, I think, but I've just never opened it because I was overwhelmed with all the other things.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so the question would be, um, is what it says we're gonna do, is that what we're actually doing, or? It sends us some examples too, right, talking about music, kind of gives examples and some references, that might be a little guiding document to do some other communication.
I like it.
Perfect, thank you.
It's a couple of years old now, though.
Yeah, and it's worried, it's a lot to it.
Yeah, so this is the, um, just to clarify, it's the, the communication plan. And, okay, yeah, no, I, I like this. A lot of what we were already talking about too, so.
But I'm trying to think.
Okay.
I think we approved it.
We could go back to the minutes. Go back to maybe twenty?
One, twenty, twenty-one, somewhere in there? Yeah, we'd have to go back. Look officially, but.
We approved it, and we just ignored it and haven't been using it.
There it is.
Yeah.
Like it does.
Okay, anything else on what's on the agenda? If not, do, do I need a motion for a workshop to the FDR?
I saw them.
That way you don't have to worry about it.
I second it.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.